Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, June the 7th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. I'd like to first start off with the call of order in roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
Luanne Wallace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Breeding.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
And Rebecca Di.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum.
Right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Cuba Porter for our invocation for stand and then remain standing for the pledge, please. Thank you.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we give you honor and praise and thank you for this blessed day. Thank you for the good rain, Lord, that has come to water our earth as many of us, Lord, are farmers around here, and we appreciate that so much. And Father, we pray for our county, for our state and our country, that God you would be the leader in our lives, and that, God, we would follow your precepts. Now, Father, I pray for this board as they have many decisions to make that affect the citizens of this county. And I thank you, Father, that they realize that they are to serve us, not the other way around. And we thank you for people like that, Lord. We thank you, Lord, that they have wisdom. We have many, many of us have great knowledge, Lord, but wisdom is a much more important thing for us as we make decisions. Now, Father, we give you honor and praise. Thank you for what you've done in this county, Father, and what you're going to do. For us, in the name of Jesus, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda as it is. There's several things that we need to add that have come up, so Mr. Breeding?
Okay, ma'am chair, I'll make a motion and we amend the agenda to add three individual items under the county administrators' report. And the first would be to address a letter from the auditor for their 2020 audit. That would be number eight, under request.
Letter of support, correct, Mr. Lester?
It's a letter of engagement, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, engagement, yeah. And number nine would be an excised tax enforcement officer, I think, to review that. Number 10 would be consideration of the budget. That's when we'll, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the budget.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Lou, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we will amend the agenda. And we accept the agenda with those amendments. All right, the first thing we'll do is to have our public hearing on the 2122 fiscal year budget and the tax rate for '22. So we'll open the floor on any comments on that.
All right, members of the board, thank you for having us. My name's Nathan Kaiser, I live in Green Valley, and I come to unite about the budget, about, specifically about the, the school budget. As you know, as many of you know, we're dealing with a state law that's come down that is forcing our school systems to adopt policies that are contrary to our values here in Russell County. And a lot of that is going to be forced on the parents in a way that's, that's not really fair and not fair to our children. What I would like to see the board do is we need to have, start having some discussions and take a hard look at what we can do on the county level here in Russell, because we know that, that state, state agencies, state ways of, of creating programs where parents have choices as to where they send their children for education, how they educate their children. That's not an option right now, and we hope to change that. But we can do something here. So our, our, our school board can't do a whole lot. They're going to have to pass some sort of a policy. But you, as the Board of Supervisors, can do something. And you can take a look at this school budget and say that for parents who don't agree with this, who does, this does not value, doesn't line up with our values, we can take the first steps in Russell County, and this might be something that carries over to other counties throughout the state, but we can take a step now to give parents a choice, to create a marketplace for education. So I encourage you to take a hard look at this, if that means reducing budgets or withholding budgets, until we can make a decision on what we can do here on the county level. I think we need to take a hard look at that. I think it's on, just as much on you all as it is on our school board, to tack this and approach this in the most responsible manner we can. And I hope you do take that into account tonight. I've talked to a few of you, and I know others have talked to, to a lot of you, and I hope that we can, we can come to some sort of a, a plan to move forward where our parents have choice for our students, because it's not fair. And I'm not just talking about people who disagree with the transgender thing, I mean everyone. All students, all parents should have a choice. And the fact that they, a lot of them don't because they have to send them to public schools, it's not fair. So if we can make it easier for our parents in Russell County to have better choices for education, then we need to do that. Thank you.
I'm Kelly McBride-Delf, and I'm speaking as library director. I hope that you will provide sufficient budget for the library to continue our operations. The proposed budget is not really sufficient to support existing operations. The minimum wage increase is going to affect half of our staff by the 1st of January, when the next increase rolls through. And if there's not an accompanying increase to part-time wages, the money for part-time wages, we will have to cut library hours and services. And don't want to do that, but just want to make sure y'all are fully apprised, appreciate what you're doing, difficult choices, and I don't envy your position, and I thank you for it. Appreciate it.
Michelle Vance. I'm going to go a little bit more in-depth than what Nate Kaiser did about the Board of Education. As they say, the buck stops with you, buck stops here. The LGBTQ community, I have absolutely nothing against it. I have several family members that are in that community, and I love them no less because of it. But what we are here to try and protect our children from are those who are going to use that and are going to say, "I'm a woman, I'm going to go in that little girl's bathroom." That's what we're here to stop. We're not here to stop the other children or to bully the other children. We want to protect them as well. It's all the children that need to be protected, every single one of them. And I know that I have spoken to my cousins, and I have spoken to my uncle, who is gay, and they wholeheartedly agree with me. This is not something that is, you know, that all of us here are trying to, you know, bully up against somebody. That's pretty much all I have to say is, you know, just consider the budget before you pass it. Let us, you know, all work together on this and get this done. And as far as the library budget, I can tell you we can cut one person, but I'll get into that later.
Anyone else?
I'd like to address the board about the, the school board budget. Until the school board comes up with a policy that's acceptable to the county citizens, I don't think you should make the budget available. Let them get it together. My understanding, they had contracted the budget out, the policy out to someone in Northern Virginia or something to write the policy. And that's kind of strange. I can't, I can't quite understand why, if you have a school administration at the, at the central office, and I understand they have some pretty decent wages, part of wages. Well, they haven't developed the policy themselves in, in conjunction with the Commonwealth's attorney, or, or, excuse me, the county's attorney. But I think the, that needs to be, the policy needs to be forth presented to you, to the citizens, and see if you will agree to it. And if you don't agree to it, then don't, don't, don't fund it. I think if you fund it before you, before they make a policy, then you'll, you'll say, "Okay, do what you want to do," and I think that's a problem I know we shouldn't be dealing with. Thank you.
From Lieutenant Hayes from Swords Creek. This is just about the budget, right? We get another public comment section later. All right, as far as the budget, I agree with what they're saying about the schools and so forth. Also, I'd like to see more money in the budget for PSA or something done with the PSA, because it's just not working the way that it is. I have a friend that said they asked him $12,000 to put water to his house. And almost every fire hydrant from Swords Creek to Raven is in a trash bag, which means it's not working. So I would like for the board to really look at PSA's funding and, or either look at their board and see how they're using their funding. It's what I'd really like to see happen, because something's not working in the PSA system. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments on our budget. And the tax rate is level, it has not changed. Any other comments on our public hearing on our budget?
Good job.
All right, seeing none, we'll close it. Next item is our new business, which is approving our minutes from the May 5th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes for May the 5th?
Madam Chair, there was one change that I saw under the report for me. It stated, we get the request for qualifications for Project Joma and the minutes, it says request for quotes, and that needs to be changed to qualifications.
Sorry, Madam Chair, in the report, in the minutes for the report under me for the RFQ,
the request for qualifications, the minutes reflected a request for quotes, and that needs to be changed to qualifications.
Qualifications, all right. Okay, with that being said, Vicki, you catch it, is, is there anything else on those minutes? All right, with that change, do we have a motion to accept the minutes for May 5th?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to accept the minutes amended per the attorney, please.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any other comments? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, a motion for our minutes for the May 19th, which is like a budget workshop and the permit with our campground. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes? Or any corrections?
Some movement, Chair.
All right, thank you, Steve. Do we have a second with them?
I'll second.
Horace, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the approval of our expenditures to make our payments. Do we have a motion for those?
Some move.
David, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl? All right, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next thing we have on our agenda is committee appointments for board considerations. And the first one was the Planning Commission, and I think Katie was going to look some information up for us or make a discussion on that, so Katie?
Yes, I reviewed your all's bylaws, and there's not really anything that discusses changing that, but I do think that's something that could be added to your bylaws, that the board can vote on the number. Now, I do think if you do make an adjustment to your bylaws, you will have to put in the statement, so long as not contrary to law, because I did look up the Planning Commission and specifically, I think that was the one we were talking about, and by statute, it does require there to be five members, between five and 14. So I think you can, you can decide, and it, and the statute also says that the, that it shall be appointed by you. So I think you would have to take it up on an individual basis, but if you have in your bylaws that you could, you would, could change those numbers, I think you could do that as, so long as it's not contrary to law. And then if you, if there is a specific board or committee, we would just have to look it up to make sure there's not any minimum or maximum requirements that you all would violate.
I'll ascertain a motion that we just table this till Katie can come back and give us actual more comments, and we can discuss with them, because I know Mr. Sword, he resigned, so that one we can, you know, we'll just strike, yeah. And then Mr. Charles Edmonds, his position was up on the 3rd, April the 3rd. We can let that one just stand till we make some final decisions on that.
Okay, so, so, yeah, you can, you can table it. I guess, I guess, so I don't cause any kind of delay, does the board wish for me to bring you some draft language for the bylaws to consider?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
Could, could you look at each of those bylaws and report back to us at the next board meeting, so that we can resolve something and get on with these appointments? I have no problem with appointing, like the Russell County PSA or any of these community centers, where one supervisor has basically all the points anyway, but the ones, like the PSA, we've already resolved that, each supervisor has one point. And I think we would like to get to that point on all our boards, if we could, with, with the exception of the ones that there's something in their bylaws or that prevents us from doing that, yeah.
So do you want me to review all boards and committees, or just the ones where the appointments are up right now?
Well, I just.
I think all boards, I think we need to, we had talked about doing it way back, and so I think we need to be consistent with all, throughout all our boards.
The reason I brought that up, I, I just think it gives you equal representation from your district to be able to have that, and, you know, it just, I think it'd work a lot more efficiently and save, save a lot of money, too, for the taxpayer.
So I'll. I'll be happy to do that.
So I'll take a motion that we table the Planning Commission till she brings us further information.
I'll need the planning commission.
All of them, all of them.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we'll just table all of these, with the understanding that whoever's in there now continues in their position until we resolve this issue. And we make an appointment.
All right.
I would like to mention this, with the Life Planning Commission, Chairman Meadows said if we reduce this number that we have had, that it could be times that the attendance wouldn't be high enough to actually ha, be able to have a meeting, a quorum, have a quorum.
They don't need to be on there if they can't make.
Yeah, we need to put something in the, in the, in our, in the bylaws that would require them, you know, to be at the meetings, if they miss so many meetings, and they can be, you know, removed from the board.
Yeah, I mean, that, they're, you know, to me, I mean, that's why they're appointed, to show up. And if they can't show up, I mean, there needs to be some rules in place that says, you know, "You missed three, you're gone," and we'll get somebody else in there to do it. We have a lot of great candidates in this county that would love to serve on the board. We just have had trouble getting them into these positions.
Well, he, I guess, was referring to, you know, during this pandemic, that they did have a lot of people that didn't attend the meeting, but maybe it was out of our phone. I attended it, one of myself, except for one, and I was out of town.
All right, any further discussion? Katie, the wording's okay? You're, you're fine with it?
You just made a motion to table all the.
Yeah. Do you bring it back to us?
I'll second.
All right, and David, second.
What about the Russell County Public Service Authority, because they're already seven?
They're already.
That one's taken care of.
You want to. You want to do this?
That one is already fixed. We took care of that a couple of years ago, so if we want to, we.
These appointments are.
Clifford is Carl's and Chris is David's, so we can exclude that one, so y'all amend your motion.
I'm ready to make those appointments.
Go amend the motion.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion to exclude the Russell County PSA from that tabling motion.
Because we, we've already taken care of that. All right, any further discussion?
Somebody seconded that.
I second.
He did, he did. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? All right, Katie, thank you. We'll skip the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development, the Daint Community Center, and we'll move on to the appointments of the Russell County Public Service Authority, the PSA. And we do have two positions, Clifford Hayes, Chris Di, and we did, on, when we changed their bylaws, it gave each board member representation of one person in their district. So the first one is Mr. Clifford Hayes.
I'd like to make a motion, put Clifford Hayes back on the PSA.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
David, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the second position was in Swords Creek, Chris Di.
I'd like to reinstate Chris, and I'll tell you, with his job knowledge and experience working in this field, he's done a really good job with the PSA, so I want to have him reappointed.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is the library board, and we will hold off on that. Katie? Next on the agenda is our citizens' comment. Limit to three minutes, please. State your name and address, and would you bring me the sheet from outside? All right, the first person to have public speaking is Mr. Nate Kaiser, so if you'll stand up, give us your address and your discussion.
918 Green Valley Road. I really already said what I wanted to say earlier. I thought that sign-up sheet was for, for, for that, but I will say, I want to commend you on, on making the motion and, and passing that, that you reduce the boards in the county to, to one person per, per supervisor. I think that's excellent. I think it's very physically responsible, and, and I really, really appreciate that. I think it's a wise move. Now, the only thing is, I want to see us look at, look at some, doing some stuff where we can have some, some money for our, for our parents to make some school choices and help them make decisions in doing that. If they choose public school, great, but if they don't want to do that, they should have that taxpayer funding available to them to do whatever they need to do, to, to do what's best for their children. I think that's each parent's responsibility, and I think it's wrong for the, for the state or, or any government to tell a parent how they should raise their kid. As long as they're doing it responsibly, they should be able to choose how they educate their children, so, all right, thank you all.
Next, Ms. Kelly McBride-Delf.
I'm sort of like Nate. I thought that was the budget one, but I'll say something anyway. Thank you for all you do, but I hope that everyone will think about participating in the library's summer reading program. We're going to kick it off back to normal with, like, live humans in the library and on the grounds and doing fun stuff. We're going to have a scavenger hunt at each library as a kickoff, and we'll have some reading groups and fun activities for folks. And I will point out, too, that I, I do think equalizing the boards is a good thing, but I think the public should also understand that not all the boards are compensated. The library board, for instance, receives no compensation, no reimbursement, so you can reduce the library board, but you'll want to save any money. Thank you.
137 Oakland Road, Swords Creek. I've come here tonight to talk to you about this law that's come down from Richmond. I seen the school board meeting the other night, I didn't get to attend it, I had some other things going on, but I think that our supervisors, that passes the law in Russell County, may be able to do something about this to bring it to a halt. I'm asking the board to pass a resolution that every school, the males will use the male bathroom and the women will use the, the girls' bathroom by the gender that's on their birth certificate. I think that would be a pretty simple way to take care of this, if we pass that. I know there's some fear about we're going to lose funding for our schools through the state of Virginia, but let's do what's best for our kids. I know you're probably hoping that this wouldn't come back to this board, but you are the ones that passes laws in, in Russell County, or passes resolutions, however you want to put it, and I think it's a resolution that needs to be passed in our county and put a stop to this evil doctrine that's coming down. CRT also, Critical Race Theory is nothing but garbage. If you've not read on it, you need to read on it before it gets here. It is a bad thing. It's very bad. It teaches children to hate their country and to hate other races. And I mean, that's the bottom line. I already spoke about the PSA. I would like to see the PSA looked into. Like I said, it's not functioning like it should be. There's also one other subject I meant to mention about the school board. I'm under the understanding that Tassell County has quite a bit more population than what Russell County does, but we got two extra board members and several different jobs through the school board. That's not necessary. So maybe that's a way to help us save some money on their budget. And again, I think you should hold their budget until something's done about this transgender, and, and like I said, the CRT, it's coming next, so be thinking about it, and I appreciate it.
Michelle Vance, 99 Willis Springs Drive. We've been talking a lot about kids tonight and about everything that's been going on. One thing that I do want to bring up, because we are trying to protect all children, everyone's children, I would like for the Board of Supervisors to let their county employees know, specifically the Russell County Library employees know, that what they put out there in Facebook world is out there for most people to see, if you don't put it on private. It's out there for children to see, it's out there for parents to see, it's out there for everyone. I know that the Patriot, as they call him, ruffles a lot of feathers, a lot of people don't like him. I get that, but his children are off limits. That's just not right. One of your employees called them an unvaccinated herd, and told me that they didn't mention his name, so therefore they weren't talking about him. We all know who the Patriot is. We all know who they talk about. And I know that the county has rules and regulations, just like most businesses do, regarding social media and everything else. I know I, you know, we, we do at the company where I work, and I know I've seen things here come through where you all do as well. So you all know me, you know, I'm not afraid to call people out. I've called Lonzo out before, and I'm not going to stop calling people out. If you do something I don't think is right, you're going to hear about it. And children, that's where you hit me. So I would expect that someone on the Board of Supervisors here talks to the library and the employees. Now, I know that this Facebook page has since gone dark. Now, I know that this Facebook page has since gone dark and black, and it can no longer be found. But there were several people that saw it. So it is, it was out there. But I just wanted to bring that up and let you all know what's going on in your county.
Is there anyone else? There's no one else on the sheet. Is there anyone else in the public? Okay. State your name and your address, please.
My name's Mary Hughes. I live at 30 Clay Hall Drive, Russell County. I just want to mention some more about the LGB. I mean, I'm worried about all kids. You know, we discriminate if we make transgender bathrooms, I guess, queer, or whatever you want to call it. Are we not discriminating against the kids that don't want it? So there's a reverse discrimination. I mean, I ask you to think about this. Put yourself in this position. You as a man or as a lady, you in the restroom, and the opposite sex comes in with you. Well, how would you feel about that? Now, if you feel uncomfortable with that, can you imagine what a child will feel like? We really need to think about this, Jordan. Not on myself. I would feel very uncomfortable with it. And, you know, as an adult, I should be able to defend myself more. But as a child, I really think that we really need to... I don't have an answer. I wish I did. It's a very tough decision, a tough question that has to be addressed. But we have to come up with something. I just don't think we can say, hey, open it up, go in if you want to. And I think that we're going to have some people that really shouldn't be in there will be using this as an excuse. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, saying none, we'll close our citizens' comment period. Constitutional officers' reports and requests. Saying none. Next, we have our county attorney report and request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the first thing under my report is just the request for qualifications that we discussed at the last meeting. And Lonzo and I worked together to draft this so that we can hire either an individual or firm to provide the erosion and sediment control and the industrial building inspection services for Project Jonah. And I think we didn't have time to get it in the board's packet, but we do have a copy of it that's been presented to you. It basically is just following procurement for competitive negotiation for professional services for that. And so we would ask the board to approve that tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve? Any discussion on this RFP, Request for Qualifications? All right, saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The next thing under my report is, I believe, Mr. Breeding had asked me at the last meeting of the board, had asked me to look into a county business license. And I had previously done that. And our county has the merchant's tax. And you have to pick between the two. And I have reviewed a little bit of it for the county business license. If you decide to do this, the maximum fee that could be charged was $50. And I know the board maybe wasn't even so interested in creating a fee. But that is the limitations for the population in Russell County. Also, if you did decide to do the business license tax, that would not apply to any businesses whose gross receipts were less than $50,000. And it would be whoever's in excess of that. I do think this is a sort of complicated issue that you probably really want to hear some feedback from the county administrator as well, because what the differential is going to be and if that was going to affect any kind of revenue that the county is receiving. Because if you do have that business license, then you can't do your merchant's tax. I have reviewed a county who does have, excuse me, county business tax. And it was fairly complicated. Granted, it was a much larger locality than ours. But the reason I look at their statutes is because they're more likely to be tested legally. And so they're more reliable. But I don't think that it's, you know, I don't know that it's in the county's best interest. I'll keep looking into it, and I'll work with the county administrator. But I guess if the county wanted to do some kind of voluntary directory of just, you know, to have businesses sign up, but there wouldn't be any penalty for not getting a license. Because if you do adopt this, you can even have a criminal penalty for failing to get that business license.
Could we do something like a registration? Just require registration through an ordinance and not even charge it. I'm not even concerned about that. I just want to know who's doing what, what service they're providing, where they're at. We need it from an economic development, marketing standpoint, and even from the county, you know, businesses. You know, Business Association would like to have something like that.
I guess the issue would be is, you know, you can only do things, certain powers that are conferred upon you and powers that flow from that. And there is a specific statute on that. And what you're wanting to do really isn't what that statute is created for. So, I mean, as far as, I think you could do a voluntary, you know, whoever wanted. But if you were going to require, I guess that would be the question. What's the penalty going to be if they don't register? Because under this, you can enforce it through fines or criminal penalties. But I don't know if that's your intent either. I mean, I'm happy to keep looking at this, but I don't want it to have adverse finance... I don't want to advise you to do something that may have a potentially adverse financial impact on the county either.
And you say the business license wouldn't apply to anybody under a $50,000 gross?
No, they would still be required to get the license. But the tax, there's a business license... Because you're replacing the tax that you have with the business license tax. And it does not apply to gross receipts under $50,000 by statute. So, I mean, it's something I can keep looking into. But the biggest question, I think, for you all, and I'll work with the county administrator on that, is what kind of financial impact it would be to switch from the capital merchant tax to the business license tax. And if it's comparable, it may be something that you want to do.
It might be something that our tourism director can work with the Chamber of Commerce to try to accumulate that information. I know a lot of people don't sign up to be a member of the chamber for some reasons or whatever. But, you know, like Steve said, if we knew what certain businesses were doing actually out there, we could help them market and help them, you know, kind of get their business out and help generate that opportunity when you don't know. It's hard to know how you do that. But maybe it's something that our tourism director, Lonzo, or Chamber of Commerce could work together on to maybe see if they could get a database built on people that... You don't have to be a member of the chamber. You just get a collective amount of, you know, that information. Sorry.
Can help with certain grant applications and stuff, too, just like SmartScale with VDOT. I know a lot of that's based around the economic development impact. And, you know, ours wouldn't be that large. But anything that we can do to help is positive.
I'll keep looking into that, but that's where I'm at right now. Right now, I don't... And it seems like it could potentially be a more complicated process than what you have in place. And that could potentially even require additional staff, which would be an additional cost. So, I mean, that would be, all those things would just be things to consider. So I'll work with Lonzo and hopefully to get you some, maybe some projected numbers on what it would be. The next issue is kind of similar into special assessments. That's something I'm continuing to work on, and I will try to report back to the board next month about how to go about that. It's not, again, all of these things, you know, require some drafting and what you're trying to achieve. So I'll continue to work with Lonzo and report back on that at the July meeting. The last item under me is a purchase of a piece of property. Lonzo did contact me about a purchase of a piece of property. And I think he can discuss probably more what it's for. But I think he did work out a purchase price for the board to consider. And you can go ahead and approve that purchase if you want to, once he describes what it's for and the price. But if you do approve it, you need to approve it subject to final title opinion by legal counsel. Because I have not had an opportunity to do a title opinion on this property yet. But you do, you can approve it. You don't have to have a public hearing for the purchase of a piece of property.
There you go. Thank you. The piece of property pertains to the Sun disposal site that the board had agreed to, that we did the presentation back in March. We have been proceeding forward and working with DQ, VDOT, and to make sure this is an appropriate site. I would like to ask for not just a motion with the final title opinion, but also continue to postpone VDOT's site distance approval for the permit. So those two components to approve this Sun disposal site purchase.
Do you have in total how much it's going to cost you?
$35,000.
That's probably, that's probably going rate.
That is going rate.
So you need a motion now for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on these two things? Based on the VDOT site approval and title opinion from our legal counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have a motion to move forward with this purchase?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion, please, which will state that the purchase of the property is subject to final title approval from the attorney and also VDOT's site line of distance, I guess?
Permit.
At the, thank you, at the Sun disposal site.
I'll, Madam Chair, I'll second that and say that we need to get to all man sites as soon as we can, you know? Once this one's finished, we need to progress right onto the next.
Yes, sir.
Longer hours, weekends open.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, we have our county administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. County administrator reports is first on the line item and now on the line item is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. That has been in the national news. Of course, this is a new program that is given to each of the states and counties, cities, and municipalities to help with the impact of the COVID-19. These funds are, they're funds that will be used to reimburse recipients for the costs incurred by state and local governments in responding to the public health emergency and the negative economic impacts prior to the passage of the American Rescue Plan. Based upon the use of fiscal recovery funds and the interim and final rules, these funds permit to be used for cover costs incurred beginning March 3, 2021. So these will begin for costs incurred for the March 3, 2021. Also, in addition, these funds have been classified into four classifications. The four classifications, of course, are to respond to the public health emergency and its negative economic impacts. Also, to respond to workers performing essential work and for the public health emergency. It also, it is a provision of the government services to extend the reduction in revenue. It also, as the last one, is to make necessary investments in the county's infrastructure. So those four things are the guidelines for the American Rescue Plan. These funds come different than the CARES did. They have different restrictions. They came directly from the feds to us instead of coming through the conduit of the state like the CARES did. This is a little different. It doesn't deal with the PPNE and all this stuff. But it is there to help Russell County citizens in Russell County. So that being said, this has been a separate set of funds that must be accounted for under the Single Nodded Act. So the committee must be appointed for this fund separately from the CARES. So, Madam Chair, I need a committee appointment for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
So I'm going to appoint myself and Tim Lovelace again. And please feel free, any of the other board members that need to come in and pick up stuff and look at it. So, Tim, I'm going to ask you if you'll help me again on this. And we'll start dispersing and overseeing how this money is delivered to the county, okay? So, Tim, if you don't care.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Can we publish this out to the public on our website, the full document? Yes, sir. I'd like to have that done. We can do that.
What, how much money are we talking about, Lonzo?
Okay. A total of $5.2 million.
But it's done in two increments each year.
Yes, yes, sir.
So it'll be half this year, half next year.
Yes. That was given across two fiscal years, and it's a good point to make. It was, it's given across two budget years to be able to get the counties and cities and towns and municipalities back on their feet. Because as well as we have said in the other minute, other budget meetings, during the COVID, of course, state of Virginia had a great run on revenue sales. Everybody bought from Amazon, and everybody ordered everything online. That was great for the revenue for the state of Virginia. But what they did at the locality level, there was unemployment. There was businesses that were shut down. This money is to put that back in, us back on our feet over the next two years. So again, the four classifications that we have done, and we will publish back on the website with, like Mr. Eaton had requested, that we can work over the next two fiscal years. It gives us an opportunity to, next two years, to build back up to where we were. Our unemployment rate right now in Russell County is at 6.8%. So we were at 3.7. So we've got to work, right now, and everybody's got to sign up. It is hiring. They're having a hard time getting, you know, workers back to work. So, and that does impact the county, you know, our revenues and our services. So this is a supplement to help that. It is not a cash flow. It's to put us back on our feet over the next two fiscal years. I have a question for the attorney. You don't have to answer me tonight. I'd like for you to research it. But in one of the lines here, it says, "Addressing educational disparities exacerbated by COVID-19, including early learning services, increasing resources for high-poverty school districts, educational services like tutoring or after-school programs, and support for students, social, emotional, and mental health needs." I'd like to get some really definition on this or definition on this to see if that would impact our public education, our students having to deal with these other issues that the governor's trying to force down on some of these laws. So if this money can be or could be available for alternative source of education, if you could look into that and let me know, I'd really appreciate it.
And Mr. Eaton, can I make one point on addition to that? Now, this is the county's appropriation of funding over the next two years.
I understand.
The school board has their own American Rescue Plan that is applicable to their programs, which is different than ours. This one is ones that we can offer for supplement, but their main programs will run under their American Relief Plan.
The only thing, I'm talking about supplement.
Okay. Next on the county administrator request and reports is the Honeaker Library Foundation repairs. Y'all have a bid quote in there, and it's up on the screen. This is for construction. I need a motion for approval to install the subfloor supports and shoring per the engineering plans that we got from D.R. Price to make sure that the weight placement on the Honeaker Library is sufficient for, you know, the general public.
I'll make that motion.
So I need a motion for approval for this.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next is the VDOT Resolution for replacement and maintenance of Willis Springs Drive culverts to elevate flooding on Route 679, which is Tombe's Hollow Road. I need a motion... a motion for approval on this motion.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All right, Tim, any discussion?
And Jeff and Mel are here, if they want to say anything. Not to put you on the spot-
Not to put you on the spot.
Not to point you out or anything. Not to point you out or anything.
That's why they're sitting over here near the podium.
I'll say, I'll go ahead and say, this is great news because it's on the six-year plan, and that is scheduled for next year. But this is going to get that started a little early, and that'll, I know it doesn't totally take care of the problem, but it will help until the rest is, is done.
Second phase started. We're going to, you know, put the new entrance pipe in, and then we'll see, you know, how it's going to act before we, we'll go raise the road also and see how it acts before we put the topping on it, you know, it's in two phases. But this is a really good starting point, and I think it'll make a really big difference.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So, all those in favor of this?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, again, VDOT Resolution Supporting the Closing of Route 663 Rock Fork Road for the Bridge Reconstruction. I need a motion and approval on this one.
I'll make that motion.
Carl, all right, a second?
I'll second.
Second, Tim. Any discussion? Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next one, thank you, Madam Chair. Next one on the county administrator request is the, the VDOT Resolution Supporting the Three Rivers Destination Pedestrian Bridge. This is, of course, in the FY 23-24 Transportation Alternative Program applications. That is on a piece of property that was given by the Virginia Department of Transportation to the Russell County and the town of St. Paul. This is where the Three Rivers Destination Center is being applied for the ARC grants and the DEHCD and the tobacco grants, et cetera. This is a pedestrian, pedestrian bridge that is adjacent to it in crossing over from the Dest, the Destination Center over into the town of St. Paul. This is one of those eligible programs for this, and this is a resolution in support of the St. Paul application for the, the Transportation Alternative Program. This will come from St. Paul. We are supporting, they are the applicant. This is a resolution in support of their application. Luann, if you have any more comments that you want to make on this one?
Before we, well, I'll make the motion so that we can get it on the table for discussion. So I'd like to make the motion that we move forward with this request for the pedestrian bridge and the VDOT Transportation Enhancement Program that will fund that, we hope.
Okay. So do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, thank yours. All right, discussion?
And, and for discussion, we, the county, have a transportation enhancement grant already open with the Daint Depot, and until we get 85% complete, is that correct, or something like that?
Eighty.
Okay, 80% complete, then we cannot ask for another transportation enhancement into that grant program. And so years ago, before I got here, the decision was made that the town of St. Paul and Russell County would work together on a piece of property down next to the county line. And it had to be developed per VDOT standards, and, and they wanted it to be a tourism piece. They didn't care what it was. They didn't say what it was. And so we have worked together on that, and so we've come to the point where we have a Destination Center that will more than likely be on that site, that will work for the entire region of southwest Virginia. And so we have worked to get a connection to the new state park, which that announcement is coming later on this month. So we're using a pedestrian trail because of the four-lane pedestrians and bicycles and everything else are not allowed out there, or shouldn't be out there. So this is going to work with everything that's going on within the region. So that's the story, backstory behind the pedestrian bridge. And we, the county, are working in tandem with the town of St. Paul, who has graciously said they would be the physical agent. And so it's, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just to add on to what Ms. Wallace had conveyed about the Destination Center, this is actually going to be home to the heart of Appalachia. That will serve all the southwest Virginia counties. So this is, it's what we call a spoken hub. This will direct them into Russell County, but it also will direct them to the breaks, to Buchanan County. They're all, will be partners in this one hub to get them into Dixon County, Buchanan County, Scott County, Wise County, Tassel County. This, this is a come-in, I guess is, and I'm not going to use the one, we're in Lebanon, and I'm not going to say the name, but this, this will be our own for southwest Virginia. So this will be part of that hub.
I have a quick question for VDOT. I appreciate, extremely appreciate what you all are doing. But I've got a question about our swinging bridges. And I know that's been a, kind of a real thorn with the type of funding that you get. Is there a possibility that we could also get these as a tourist designation for our local swinging bridges in our areas? And, and y'all don't have to answer me tonight. You can take it back and do some investigation. I know, you know, for a couple of years here, I know y'all went back and repaired that one and got it fixed back, and actually had to put some signs on it because people just tore it up. I mean, they just go down there, and they're not very respectful. They tear this stuff all, all to pieces, and that's a sad situation. But I thought if there's some tourism dollars that could be utilized for these designations, these, these things are just awesome to look at, awesome for families to take photographs at. I seen, and the reason I'm bringing this up, I've seen a lot of prom pictures. Are, are they historic? Are they his, well, I mean, that's a good question. Are they historic? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm sure they were put in, well, way before my time, because I know Mel, we used to go down, run across those, those swinging bridges down there at Hubbard Hole. Right.
The guy who worked at VDOT, which was located at the Dainte Center at that time, that's how he got to work. He lived on the other side of the river, so he crossed the swinging bridge to get to work there. So it's been our minimum years.
Well, Lonzo, if you could look into that and kind of get an idea to see if, what the historic bay, I'm like Lou, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of history with this. And we need to do our research on those to see. I mean, I, I don't want VDOT to take full responsibility if there's some partnerships or, you know, alignments that we could bring to the table that we could utilize for funding or upgrades or stuff like that. I think it's good. I seen, and while I was getting back earlier, I seen a lot of people getting their prom pictures and stuff like that, took at these bridges. I thought it was pretty awesome, you know, and I hate seeing them go away. If there's anything that we could do to save and restore and keep them up, and I'd love to be able to do that without having to put the full burden to try to continue maintenance on these things if we could do some partnerships. But I appreciate if y'all look into anything or find out. I'll, I'll be an advocate for you.
Thank you, guys. Next on the county administrator reports and requests is the Litcha Treatment Agreement with the town of Lebanon. Of course, we did one change to the, the agreement that y'all have in front of you, and it is to be stricken from it upon legal, legal counsel. In the first paragraph, the town agrees to treat Litcha on behalf of the county at its sewer treatment plant in the same manner in which the parties have heretofore acted from the, in the same manner in which the parties have heretofore acted to be stricken, as, as outlined in your, your agenda. I need a motion and approval upon those changes.
That's the only change, legal counsel. Okay. Everyone have that. All right. Do we have a motion to accept this agreement with the town of Lebanon?
So moved.
Steve, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, any discussion?
Yeah, and Lonzo, this is kind of, we're still looking at the Litcha down at the Dainte wastewater facility.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is kind of like a secondary backup or a primary when we need it?
Exactly, sir.
Right, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
While we're in discussion, so the 1, 2, 3, 4, just to be clear, is stricken, right? Or just the 1?
Just 1 in the same manner in which the parties have heretofore acted. That's, that part right there will be stricken-
Thank you.
-in the first paragraph.
Just clarifying.
They had put in, you know, for sewer treatment, but we're treating it at the Dainte. We're also looking at, you know, DQ as a backup to give them on a contingency plan for the town of St. Paul and the town of Lebanon. So we're trying to get it all in, in preparation with DQ's, you know, final wishes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator reports is prepayment of the July 2021 executive county expenditures. I need a pre, a motion and approval on that.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. And the discussion of that is, our next meeting was supposed to be the Monday after the 4th, and that is a holiday. So we're moving our board meeting till the 12th, and they wanted to go ahead and make sure we made our payments of our expenses, our bills, before we, they would be due before we had our next meeting. So all those in favor of the prepayment for the July meeting?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Auditor's Engagement Letter with Robinson, Farmer, and Cox for the upcoming fiscal budget audit. I need a motion and approval on that, on the engagement letter.
So moved, Mr., Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Luann. A second?
Second.
Steve, all right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the excise tax enforcement officer that we had posted in the paper for interview for the, at the Commissioner of Revenues Office for the cigarette and bill tax enforcement. I need approval for the hiring for that position at a salary of $30,000.
So do we have a motion to approve this hiree, this excise tax officer?
I'll make that motion.
Carl, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lou. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, the last one on the county administrator request is, of course, the Russ County FY 21-22 countywide budget and the year 22 county tax rates. By the way, the tax rates have not changed. There's no increase in taxation, and I need approval, a motion and approval on this.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget for next year?
Can we do discussion before any motions are made?
Ms. Katie?
I mean, it's under Robert's rules, it's more proper to make a motion, but...
We make our motion a second, and then we discuss it.
You can always amend your motion. If you were the one that makes the motion, it can always be amended.
Yeah, amended.
Yes, if you make the motion to approve the budget, but you want to amend it.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion then.
Steve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yours? Okay, discussion?
Discussion, okay. I've got major issues here. I'm, as I sit down and look at the budget resolution for 2022, I see that we're level funding the schools from what we did last year, which is about $9.1 million. And a little over eight of that is in operations, and a little over, well, the balance of it, a little over, like, 1 is in debt. And then I go back, and I did, I went back and checked that against the 2021 resolution. That's, that's all right. That's correct. However, in the 2022 resolution, I see that the total budget for the schools is 57, just a little less than $57.2 million. When I went back and checked it against the '21 budget, it was like $47 million, which is a differential of almost $10.2 million. Now, my question was, where is that money coming from? And I, and I got part of it out of Dr. Brown's email that came in late Friday, which I got this morning. It, but that's, even in his email, you know, he alludes to $11.7 million. So is that $57 million number correct? Or, my big issue is, I haven't seen a copy of the school's budget. All I see is its bottom-line numbers. And, and I'm in a position now that I want to, I want to see a detailed budget. I'm not ready to vote on this until I see a budget. I want to understand where they're, I want, I want to understand, and I know they're limited on what they can do with their money, but I, I want to see a plan, and I want to see a budget that reflects that plan on how they intend to spend it. And I know he says that they're going to do air conditioning at the high school gyms. It's great. I'm all for that. Replace the coal-fired furnaces with natural gas at four schools. That's, that's fine, too. He's talking about renovating locker rooms and restrooms at, I guess, probably at the football field, I guess, is where he's talking about, for Lebanon High. But there's no price listed on it. And he talks about the installation of a biopolar ionization unit in the air handlers, which, in all the Russell County buildings, which purifies all the, I guess it purifies the air and cleans the viruses out, you know. It's kind of a safety precaution. And I guess the estimate, what I saw that is on their needs list that they send out every year, was about $600,000. But, you know, I, I look at this thing, and you know, we're, we're looking at big dollars here. And I just wonder, is there some of that money that can be used to offset some of the money that we appropriate? We've level funded them for years and years and years.
For, on the screen here, the $57,195,377,64, that does include their American Relief it's funds.
Does it include that $11.7 million that he's talking about?
Yes, sir. It is included in it, and it's been verified. So-
Well, okay, then, the ES, what is, ESSER funding, this is for 1 and 2, or 2 and 3, was $11.7 million. So I, I guess what you're seeing then is the differential between-
Last year's and this year's is the American Relief Fund.
They got Phase 1, the ESSER Phase 1 was shown in last year's numbers?
No. Last year's numbers was CARES. This is a total different, this is American Relief. This is how they're accounting for it. Last year's, it was more of partial funding and a reimbursement, and Tim can speak on, you know, not to put him on the spot, but that was the part of it. It was not a budget component like the American Relief Plan is. The, this one is, they have to count for it directly from the feds through the Department of Education. So that's what I was referring to earlier. What we have in our American Relief Plan is going to be totally different than what they can use theirs for. It is restricted. These are federally funds, funds. So it will be accounted under the Single Audit Act, and it must be accounted for, and it does have restrictions. Now the guy-
Now, you're talking about our funding. Now-
No.
The school is, yeah.
Yeah, the, the 57-
Both have to have the single audit funding. Both have to be accountable.
Yes, but they have different guidelines that is given to them under the American Relief Fund Act. When you go through the 151 pages, and that's what, that's how long it is, of the, of the law that was established, the Department of Education has its own set of guidelines on how they can spend that money and what it's appropriate for. Actually, their funding actually extends out to 2025. They, they even got a longer term to be able to spend it. So our, what we gave them- So our, what we gave them on the 9 million, 101, 317, which is here, that includes the operational and the debt load. That, that takes part of the operational plan, that includes both, which includes, right here, you see that there's 8,024,000, 8 million, 24,0781 in operations. And then the million, 76, 536, which is what we're, you know, that's for the debt load, which we have an obligation on. Now, that comes out, you know, to the 91, 9 million, 101,317.
Which is more than our required minimum.
Above 1.3 million above the required local effort, RLE. Yes, sir.
Required local effort is 7 million and some odd dollars.
Yes.
So it's, but it's 1.3 million differential, 1.313, I think. Another, another issue that I've got, when I read, read through that, and I feel like I've, haven't done due diligence because I, I really sat down and read through this thing, this resolution. There's one part of it, okay, one of the last paragraphs that it says, in fact, I probably should just read that in the resolution. It just forward me. Okay, this is on the next to the last page of the resolution. It said, "Be it still further resolved that the annual contributions that are hereby appropriated shall be disturbed, shall be dispersed on a monthly basis, with the amount dispersed not to exceed one-twelfth of the total appropriation unless otherwise agreed upon. Contributions to the Russell County School Division and the Russell County Department of Social Services are exempt from this limitation. In addition, the county administrator may require written reports on how previous allocations was or were spent before the future dispersments are made." And why would the DSS and the schools be exempt from this same requirement?
This, this requirement was decided upon by the previous boards. This is at the, at, at the discretion of the board of supervisors if they're being exempt. Now, if you, from the exemption, and I haven't seen, and Katie can, you know, also come in on this, I have not seen any restriction that restricts the board of supervisors from any department that you give funding to of not providing budgets or, or monthly reporting. That's why it's in there.
There, there's, I mean, every other department, Sheriff's Department, Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurers, they all do their thing on a monthly basis. They submit their invoices, clerk's office, everybody who's departmental.
Well, and, and it is, but see, the other departments, the sheriff's office, the clerks, the courts, the libraries, Katie Kelly's ring, they automatically come through us. They come through our financial management system, they are counting for it immediately. We, we have total oversight. Now, these, the school board, the DSS, the IDA, and the PSA has its own financial management system. So they're all separate from our reporting.
You know, I'm, I'm going to comment on this, Steve. You know, I think, I think this is something that they should do for us. And I think we should include the PSA, the IDA, DSS, school board. I mean, I have no problem with them, and I'm expressing my opinion, I have no problem with them giving us these monthly reports.
Well, I, I think the monthly reports too, but I want, I want to, I want to see how much they've spent on a regular basis. We'll never really know, I mean, the way it's set up right now, the only time we really know what they've spent is at the end of the year and what category they've spent it in. If we go ahead and appropriate the money, then it can be moved around to whatever category they want. Right? It can be shifted from line item to line item.
By law, once you transfer the funds to the school board, it becomes their autonomy to be able to move the money.
Which it may not be used for the intention that we approved it for.
You, there, Katie can chime in on this one.
Yeah, I may, I haven't. I haven't researched the specific issue that you're discussing, Steve, and I know I've looked at it in relation of, I guess, a conflict inquiry. When you have employees of the school system that are serving on the board. One of the reasons that it's not a conflict for them to vote on the budget is because you don't do a line item budget, you don't approve a line item budget for the school system. It's just, it's an amount that you fund. So I, I wouldn't want you all to do anything that's not, that's, that's against the law. I mean, I think I would have to look that up to see what.
It is, it is against the law for us to approve a line item budget.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, I have not looked into that specific issue. But I know that's, when you look at the law and the Attorney General opinions regarding conflicts of, of school employees serving on board of supervisors, that's one reason that it's not, is because that, that budget is not approved line by line. It's approved as, as an amount, and so you don't have that control over it. So again, I haven't looked at that, but I mean, I just want to make the board aware that that may be an issue that needs to be resolved before you make a decision on it.
One of my concerns is, I'm like Steve, you know, I haven't seen their budget. And I would like to, I'd like to have a reconvene meeting after they meet on the, what, the 15th? When's their next meeting? July?
July 15th.
July the 15th.
I, I really don't feel comfortable voting on this at all until I can see that budget. Now, we're really good, they have some sort of plan as to what they want to spend that money for. You know, I can, I can sit down and look down the, the needs list that they sent, and I can see, you know, there's some things that they could do, and I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I, I think, you know, if you've got that money and you can, and you can take care of some needs, you need to go ahead and take care of it, you know, as long as it's a legitimate expense, you know?
Well, one of my, I had asked in our last meeting for a plan to look at their teachers' wages and our janitors and lower-level employees. I've not seen or heard anything from anybody as far as a plan where we can be competitive with some of the surrounding counties. I would honestly like to see a plan, a short, mid, long-term plan, to see how we're going to get from point A to point B. And, you know, I, I just, I have some real concerns with this because, one, the lack of communication, two, there's no plan in place. I mean, or somebody needs to show it to me that we're, you know, that we can attract more people to live here and come here and want to work here if we can be more competitive here in the county. And I've not seen or heard anything from anybody. One of the things you got to remember also under the code of Virginia, the board of supervisors, by law, by law, has to approve the budget by June 30th. Yeah, so.
Several days before June 30th. Time enough for them to give us a copy of the budget, give us a week or so to review it. We could adjourn to reconvene at that time.
I give up with this microphone. I did, I did find the statute, it's actually under the education statutes, and I'll, I'll read it to you about what the law says about that. It's 22.1-94 appropriations by county, city, or town governing body for public schools. And it says, "A governing body may make appropriations to the school board from the funds derived from local levies and from other funds available for operation, capital outlay, and debt service in the public schools. Such appropriations shall not be less than the cost apportioned to the governing body for maintaining an educational program meeting the standards of quality for the several school divisions prescribed as provided by law. The amount appropriated by the governing body for the public schools shall relate to its total only or to such major classifications prescribed by the Board of Education pursuant to 22.1-115. The appropriations may be made on the same periodic basis as the governing body makes appropriations to other departments and agencies." So I do think you're limited to those nine classifications, but you can make it periodic as you would other agencies.
You know, I just, I just feel frustrated at this. And, you know, the bottom line is that if you're an elected official, you need to have some accountability. You know, I'm tired of being, having it being said, "We'd be glad to give you a raise, but that board supervisor won't give us any money." Okay, one way to, one way to, to address that issue is give them taxation authority. We'll just pull 9 million dollars right off our bottom line and give it to them. I don't know what the process is to do that. And, and, you know, maybe it takes some legislative action, I don't know. But I would imagine, maybe we ought to talk to some of our legislators about this. I mean, if you're an appointed school board, it's one thing. You know, the responsibility lies here. But if you're an elected official, you need to be, you need to have the taxing authority that you can, you can set your own budgets. And we can deal apples to apples, oranges to oranges. So, and I'm just griping right now is what I'm doing, but I.
Well, I mean, even with the pandemic, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Steve, but I mean, even with the pandemic, you can't live off free money. This, somebody's going to end up having to pay all this money back. And eventually, we are servants of this whole county. And we should take the financial fiduciary responsibility individually to say, "We've got to do what's right." I mean, I'll just tell you. And we don't know what's coming down the road. I mean, we didn't know the pandemic was coming. We don't know what's going to face us down the road, but I, I like a plan in place to address every one of these issues, to say, "What if? What if this happens or what if that happens?" Just not write a blank check, let's get something together and get a plan. Not only for that, but, you know, I guess depending on what actions they take at their next meeting, you might see a max, a mass exit of public students leaving the county or for the public education. We don't know. Does anybody, can anybody answer that question in here, knowing what's going to take place? So I feel like we need to take some very serious steps to address some of these things. If we approve this and, and we don't take those steps and have a plan in place and communications between all entities and boards and leaders in this area, and not just talk to one or two on the phone, we all need, we just need to have a reconvene meeting and have the whole school board and the board of supervisors here together at one time.
We, I'd be okay with that. You know, every year, we, we've been level funding them for several years, and every year we always get money back. And it baffles me how we can do that, you know? I mean, we need to work, everybody has to work with a real budget. There can't be so much excess in the budget that you just don't have to worry about this or that, and you end up giving a million dollars back at the end of the year. That's a million dollars that the county could use to do some stuff, you know, that, that we need to do. There's many projects that we need to do right now, but we just, we're just underfunded, you know? Maybe some of this COVID money, maybe we can do a thing or two with that. But, you know, I'm just, I'm just getting really frustrated with this whole situation. So I'm looking for answers and I'm looking for alternatives, but I'm not ready to vote on this. I want to amend my motion to table this until we get a budget, a detailed budget from the school board, even though we've gotten them before, they've given us budgets before. Even though, you know, if it's, you know, even though if we can only allocate based on those nine items that Katie meant, that, that's fine. But I want to see that, and I want to see a plan on, with numbers on it, how they intend to use this, this 11.7 million dollars that they're going to get over the, I guess, through 2024. And I understand they can only project out part of the way, but, you know, we need, need to see if they're going to use it for things that, you know, are going to be useful. Although, all we can do is complain, apparently.
I'll second it.
The motion is on the floor is to amend, Steve.
To amend, right. Motion is to amend, to ask for a reconvene meeting once we obtain a budget and a plan for the utilization of that E S S S E R money. We'd have to do that sometime before the end of the month.
But we have to do it.
We have to have our budget in place and approved, or they even meeting? It's a school board meeting, do you know what their calendar is?
They, they had a continued meeting for June the 24th to approve their budget. They are, they are not allowed to pass their budget until you all pass yours. So if you do wish to have a reconvene meeting, then I would just ask that you give them enough time so that they can pass their budget within that timeframe as well.
So they have advertised, they're going to make a special call for it?
Yes, they would have to have a special called meeting to move it up, to discuss it, so that's, and that requires three days' notice.
We can adjourn to reconvene at a particular time.
Yes, yes, that's what they did, and they, but that, they, they didn't until June the 24th, so they would have to.
So that basically gives us three days, 28, 29, and 30, right?
Well, they would have to call a special called meeting and give three days' notice to take it up before that June 24th date, which I think that would have to happen for both boards to meet again, because they would have to meet after you all, after you all approve your budget.
Yeah, it's, it's not that we have to have their approved budget, we have to have their proposed budget.
They have to have your approved budget before they can officially pass that.
Well, if they give us their proposed budget, we can give them our approved budget. It's complicated.
He shouldn't be this complicated.
So well, then with that, we're in discussion, maybe we need to have the DSS give us their, I don't know, the DSI.
You still don't have to have one, you know? Yeah. Okay, 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 I was wanting to make sure they come into play. Those are my, I'm just.
No, you don't, if you didn't, if you, they tell you exactly what they're doing with the minutes, with the projects, the minutes are.
More enough on my side. Yes, yes.
Well, I don't know if they're getting any COVID, any money like that, but, but, you know, they can give us their budget. We can certainly get their budgets from anybody else, PSA and DSS and whoever, you know? Whoever was exempted, I guess, you know?
I think under that section you read, it was the school board and DSS.
Yep, but, but Rebecca's also mentioned the PSA, who is independent, and the IDA, which is independent. Just ask them for their budget as well.
Everybody.
I think the motion was to table the budget for right now, until you can, until you can have a.
Table the budget and have a reconvene meeting once we get a copy of their budget, the school board's budget, for us to look at. And the rest, and all the other groups who are independent.
I've asked for that plan, if I, if you can throw it in, I appreciate it.
And the plan, you know?
And the plan.
I, I guess that's the issue that we've got, we've got to look at is, which, the IDA, they will meet Thursday, so, I mean, that can be discussed with them, and the PSA has not had their meeting yet this month, it will be next week. But the school board will have to have a reconvene meeting to, to make any changes, to approve any changes to be submitted to you all.
What changes are they going to submit?
Well, I mean, I guess, or the, the details, they would have to.
Well, I mean, I assume they're going to submit to us, all I'm asking for is just the budget that they've submitted to us, but I'd like to see it in some detail. If they can just, and Dr. Brown apparently has some sort of plan, he's, he's listed out several things here. And I'm, you know, I'm just concerned with, you know, the money for the next year or two. You know, I understand he can't, you can't spend it all, you've got until 2024 to spend it. We need to, you know, what he's got planned for the next year or so, what he, what he envisions, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think he would have to get approval from the board, though, before he could submit. You know, if he's going to, if he's going to provide more detail than what this board already has, I don't think he has the authority to do that without their approval and saying, "Yes, send this to the board of supervisors." I guess potentially, instead of you all having, instead of you all adjourning to reconvene, since I'm going to have to call a special call, if you want to have that joint meeting, I'm going to have to call a special called meeting for the school board, I could just call.
Could it all be done at the joint, at a joint meeting?
I mean, I think that's fine. I mean, again, I don't want to, I'm, I don't want to be speaking for another board to, you know, but that's, that's the process that I'm going to have to go through.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I think that's.
I think it would need to be at the government center, you know, because it's, you know, it's going to get crowded.
So, it's just, it's just difficult. So, it's just, it's just difficult to schedule for another board without them being here, so, um, but that, that may be the simplest process, is just for you all to adjourn and to call the special meeting once Lonzo and I guess myself have been able to reach out to them, because I don't know what times, if anybody's going to be on vacation, and I think everybody would probably want to be present, so if we could, if we can make it happen, so.
Could, could we tentatively just set it for the twenty-fourth, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you can, but if, especially if it's going to be a joint, and they already have, they've already adjourned to reconvene, and, but they did not have it at the government center, so I'd still have to give notice to move it if it's going to be here. Um, but we might could do that, it's just, it's, you're pushing up against the deadline is the only concern I have, if there's going to be, if, any, if anybody's going back to the drawing board, you're running out of time to pass the budget. But that's possible.
All right, so your motion.
You amended your motion, and you added to your motion that we have a meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I, I've lost your motion, I've lost.
An amendment isn't changed to the motion. The, the amendment itself isn't changed. So, okay. Maybe the best thing we can do is just reconvene on a certain date. And we'll, we can look at the budget, reconvene, look at the budget, and if Dr. Brown can do a plan, then fine, you know, if he can't, we'll just have to go without that. Okay, I, I'll amend that motion to reconvene, and we just need to come up with a date prior to, prior to the twenty-fourth, you know? I mean, if they should decide that we, they want to meet with us, we can adjourn again and reconvene on the twenty-fourth, you know? If, if that's, if they want us to do that, you know?
So, so you're saying you would, you would adjourn to reconvene to a date prior to June twenty-fourth?
Prior to June, the board, our board, we need to go ahead and get a copy of the budget, have an opportunity to look at it, and then reconvene, uh, to discuss that, you know?
Okay.
And then, at that meeting, we could again adjourn if, if the school board wants us to meet, if they want a joint meeting, we could adjourn then and reconvene on the twenty-fourth with them, even if it was at school board office. Is that where they're going to meet?
That was where they were going to meet for the June twenty-fourth, just to approve the budget.
Even if it, even if it, we, we could, we could do it at school board office.
Yeah, I mean, um, I, I, I think that's fine, again, I think they'll have to, I think they'll have to call a special called meeting to get this approved to send to you all, but they, we, they can do that and then keep their June twenty-fourth as, as a hope to approve the final budget.
Well, the idea would be to get a copy of their budget, and let's go ahead and review that prior to our reconvene meeting, and then if they can get a, a plan together on what they're going to spend that money on, that'll be great, we can look at it at a later date.
And I, and I do think the superintendent can probably be getting that together, but he, he can't, he doesn't have the authority to submit it to you, so, three days to call the special called meeting, so if you want, if you all want to.
Even if he wants to call it a draft, a tentative plan or whatever, because they're probably going to go ahead and go along with whatever he wants, you know, if he wants, he wants to make it a, put some.
I guess just to be safe, I would probably, I would probably try to set the meeting at least not before next Wednesday.
Yeah.
And that way, that if they do want to meet and take that up, they have time to do that prior to you all having your meeting.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry. That's, that's what I had on, that's, that's, that's the way we've been working with. So just to get a little bit of clarity on it, the board of supervisors reconvene to look at the draft budget that is, will be, that'll be submitted to the board, Russell County School Board, then we can reconvene after that with the school board if appropriate. Yes, if appropriate, okay. That is next Thursday.
Okay, do we have clarity on that, how that's been stated?
You have to, we had a book of laws back here.
Because I want, I want to second that, but I want to make sure I'm clear on it, is that right?
Do we have to have a date?
Are you clear on it, Steve?
We have to have a time? Yes, you do have to have a time, yes.
But I would high, highly encourage them to meet with us.
And.
At the government center, not there.
Yes, that's got to be in the motion too, we're at times and the date.
And, and we. And you want to approve our budget on that night, on the seventeenth?
No, I'm not going to commit to approve it.
You're going to consider the budget.
I'll consider it, but I'd like to be able to see the factual information first.
And see, Katie, me and, me and Katie's been looking through the codes, to make sure you, both boards has had the appropriate public hearings, the, the separation of times, the public notices, and that's what we were doing while y'all were sitting there changing the dates, so if you reconvene on the seventeenth, that'll give y'all enough time if you need to reconvene with joining the Russell County School Board. If you don't, you can approve the budget that night.
I mean, they already should have this information together, you should be able to get it to us tomorrow, Katie.
I, I, no, no.
No, that's.
I just thought I'd throw it out.
Budget, that.
But we need to vote on this, because you've made that.
So Steve made the motion for us to reconvene on the seventeenth at five o'clock, David seconded here to go over what they're sending us. Okay, all right, uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. All right, now, we're moving on.
Madam Chair, that concludes the county history reports and requests.
Thank you, ladies. Now, matters before the board, Tim, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
David.
Well, the only thing I guess I want to say is, we've had a lot of our kids in our county that's had a lot of success in Castlewood, Lebanon, and Holnaker. And I know we haven't had the opportunity or availability to recognize those children with the success that they've had with the pandemic and with the sports and everything, but, uh, you know, maybe as time goes along, Madam Chair, maybe we can have some sort of opportunity to back up and maybe do some recognition for these student athletes, and a lot of them, like the valedictorians and, uh, soliditorians and stuff like that, that's had a lot of success. Uh, I just wanted to make it known that, you know, even through the pandemic, we've had a lot of kids that's really excelled and done great things in our county, and it's a shame we ain't been able to get them up here and recognize them like we usually did, and to show them how much we do appreciate them, and we want them to stay here, live here, and raise their children here in this county, but maybe at a time, Madam Chair, we can get all of us behind us and we can have a special day of recognition to back up and do that.
No, ma'am, I've created enough havoc tonight, I think I'm good.
Chris, do you have anything, sir?
I had a call last night pertaining, David probably know more about this, a bridge at Blackford, they want to move to some property belonging to John Combs, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, we've already checked into that, the old, the old bridge, it's full of lead.
I couldn't understand the location of the bridge.
The old, the old bridge is down there at Hovers Hole. Yeah, we, about four years ago, we looked into that, and to try to see if there's an opportunity to get that bridge moved, and what we had found out, remember we was in Richmond, and we found out that that bridge has, uh, a lot of contaminated factors, you're really not allowed to mess with it or move it or do anything to it, if that's the one you're talking about.
They said it was at Blackford and wanted to be moved to John Combs' property, and I don't know where he has some property.
I might have to look into it.
I know, he lives on Big A Mountain.
Yeah, I'll get with you, and we'll find out which one it is, okay?
Luke?
Uh, the only thing I want to say is I want to thank the board for, um, helping me out tonight on the sun transfer, yes, I agree, Steve, thank you, David, and the whole entire board who agreed with this, that we need to work on our transfer stations, our convenience centers, whatever you're calling these things, because, um, this is definitely a needed service in all of our areas, so thank you very much.
Carl?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. And now, where, I just need a motion to save it.
Motion to reconvene on the seventeenth.
Reconvene, we've already got it on the seventeenth, we've already made it, right, Katie, at five o'clock? Okay, thank you.